...they want to speak because of something that they heard. We'll just ask you to, again, say your name, spell it out if necessary, and your address. Okay? Thank you. We'll start in a minute. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and also a moment of silence in memory of the Syracuse Police Officer Michael Jensen and Oni Gaga, county sheriff's deputy Michael Busak. Thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands my nation under God, in the name of this world with clear peace and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the first round. Welcome to our Monday, April 15 meeting, starting at seven. To start off, we just went through the pledge of allegiance and so forth. Normally, we start with a little public hearing, or I'm sorry, a public comment period. So if there's anyone who would like to ask any general questions, we're ready to listen, and here we have a second. Okay, with no comments being... Oh, we'll give them a second.
I might have missed that. Is that any comments about anything?
Yeah, about anything. Go ahead.
Oh, I do have some.
Sure.
Let me get them out. What is, um...
Name, address?
Name and address.
We know who you are.
Oh, Sean Enger for a Bellbar Drive. I just wrote it. I thought it was good over there. The master plan, is there any master plan for retention ponds and retention basin? Have you looked in Rieger's old plans to see what they're doing, why they had to do that, and what's going to be done about cleaning it out and putting up a new floodway? That's one. Two, skateboard park. I hear you're talking about pickleball, basketball, but nothing mentioned a skateboard park. And what are you reading? You want to have possibly a separate one for sprinklers?
Correct.
Couldn't that also be used for filling your pool and watering your lawn?
Correct. That's the, that would be the purpose, I think.
Okay. Would you then use that, say, on a drought situation to find somebody to use and water that shouldn't be being used?
That could potentially be part of the asset.
Which I think would be a good thing.
Sure. Absolutely. Makes sense.
And then I asked about the hydro plant on Salisbury Mills, the hydroelectric plant that's only open a couple of months a year, you said?
Correct.
Is there any reason they can't be asked to open that and let the flood water out, lower the water, when they know there's a flood from the town or heavy rains? They open dams, they open floodways all over the country because of, you know, expected rainfall.
Okay. What I've been told, and we can, we have to make contact with these guys, what I've been told is that dam does not have any gates on it that opens. There's only, what I've been told is there's one gate on the bottom of that dam, they call it a fishway.
Right.
And it's my understanding that they do open it when there are extreme weather events. But what we'll do is we'll verify that it's opened or not closed and what their policy is with that.
I go by there a lot, as a lot of people do. I've never seen it open in quite a while.
Well, you won't see it, is my understanding, because it's below, it's below the water level.
Well, it used to come out very high. Was that when they're making electric?
That's, yeah, when the, well, it's my understanding, again, they're doing it in the spring and fall, depending on what kind of water they have. If not, it's my understanding, again, what I've been told is they only use it once a year. And then that electric is brought up to Canada.
Sent back there.
I'm not quite sure. I don't know the route, but just saying, whatever it hurt, but we can contact them and see what the...
Everybody else opens up floodways, everything else during flood season. No reason I can't. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you want answers on, you want to talk about the questions you just answered, or you want me to?
You can ask them later. It looks like something's going on here.
All right. Because some of the stuff, we'll probably have to get some answers at the end of the day.
Yeah. Well, there were some other ones I asked you, you said you're going to get back to me on, which I'll talk to you when you're...
Okay.
The next time.
All right. Sounds good. Is there anybody else that has any comments or any questions? Okay. If not, then we'll start our first public hearing, adoption of local law enacting chapter 69 of the Village Code, Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals amending chapter 315 zoning of the Village Code. So the legislative intent is that Board of Trustees, Village of Washington, is authorized to abolish the village's existing planning board and transfer all planning board functions to the zoning board of appeals, which will have the same power and duties as both the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. This law is enacted pursuant to local Village law, 10 of the municipal home law. So that's the intent. If anybody would like to ask any questions at the public hearing, again, just need your name, address, and your question. Okay, not having any comments at this point. Can I, well, I'm opening, make a motion to open the public hearing for the local law number three.
Motion to open the public hearing.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So again, if there's no further comments, then can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next is adoption of local law enacting chapter 11 to the Village Co-Consultant Fee. So the purpose of this article is to ensure reimbursement to the village for actual cost of professional consulting and village professional staff services with respect to the review of land use applications of Board of Trustees or any of the board or commission having jurisdiction to approve or recommend with respect to the application. The village has found that in many instances where it would be otherwise be appropriate to avail itself to expert consulting services, the reviewing board is reluctant to do the same because of the cost to the local taxpayers. But the village nevertheless bears the cost because of necessary professional services are provided by the village staff. The purpose of this law is to require that the applicant bear the cost of the professional services. The village needs to review their land use application in a fair, equitable manner consistent with the law of the state of New York. I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Any public comment? Okay, no comments being heard. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Next is, let's see, we're in there. So, public hearing for 61 East Main Street Associates LLC for hardship application seeks a moratorium variance pursuant to local law number one and eight of 2023.
Mayor, I believe that's local law number two and eight of 2023.
Two and eight. Okay, put a correction to local law number two and number eight of 2023. Thank you. So can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes five zero. So tonight's public hearing is to consider the application of 61 East Main Street Associates LLC, which requests that the Village of Washingtonville Board of Trustees grant 61 East Main Street Associates a hardship variance for building moratorium and provide for, in 2023, local law number two and local law number eight. First, the Board of Trustees will hear from the applicant, then the Board of Trustees will hear from the Washingtonville residents who wish to respectfully request their views about 61 East Main Street Associates hardship application. This public hearing is not an opportunity for the residents to ask the board questions about the application. It's solely your opportunity to express your opinion about the hardship application. The board will not answer any questions regarding the hardship application. If you wish to speak regarding the hardship application, please sign the sheet in front of Village Clerk Christine Shankman. When the time for the public comment, Ms. Shankman will call your name. When she does, please state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Moreover, please keep your comments respectful and confine them to the application itself. The board will reject any comments that are not respectful. Okay. So gentlemen, you have the floor. And again, if you gentlemen wouldn't mind, if you're not on the list, if you just, your name and associate.
Yep. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. For the record, my name is Charles Gottlieb. I'm land use counsel for the applicant. I'm with the law firm in Albany, New York, from Whiteman, Austria, Minnesota. Here on behalf of 61 East Main Streets Associates LLC. Here this evening with Michael Morganti behind me, who's the project engineer, Phil Greeley, who is our project traffic engineer, and Moshe Halpern, who is the project owner. As you stated, we recently submitted a moratorium variance application, which was dated January 26, 2024. Almost three months later, we now have a public hearing on this application. Tonight, I'd like to summarize our application, go through how we meet the standards set forth in the moratorium law, and also have Mr. Morganti go through the site plan for members of the public, so they can be refreshed as to what the project is. The project has been within the village since 2020, so we're now on about four years of processing this application. It's for 28 residential units. It is in the OR zoning district, where these residential uses are a permitted use. The applicant, last April of 2023, was before the planning board, and the planning board was on the cusp of adopting a negative declaration pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which is a finding that the project will not result in any significant environmental impacts. That, however, was blocked by the moratorium. To refresh your recollection, there was one moratorium, the initial moratorium, that did not encompass the project. The village board at the time had revised the moratorium purposely to encompass the project. So we're here this evening requesting a variance from the moratorium, which would allow us to proceed with the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. The standards of review are outlined in our submission. It was a lengthy document that constitutes the record. But I'll go through kind of each item just for the board and members of the public, so they may comment on the same. The moratorium variance requested herein is not because the applicant has a mere concern that regulations may change, or that delay may occur, or that it will lessen financial gains. That's one of the standards in the moratorium. In fact, this village entered in a so ordered stipulation with the court in 2020, which said the village shall review the application for site plan to a conclusion diligently and in good faith. In response to that, the planning board did their duty, and it was, the application was thoroughly reviewed, and again, we were on the cusp of a secret negative declaration. But that was all put to a halt when the village board adopted its moratorium. I'll also point out a statement made by the planning board chair at that April 25, 2023 planning board meeting, which really sums up the level of review that has been done on this project. I might get his name wrong, so please forgive me, but Chairman Bukowski stated, "I'm just going to give you an explanation. A lot of eyes have looked at this, and a lot of legal eyes before yours. This project is just going on and on and on. The public hearing has been open since last June. We've had numerous meetings talking about flooding, talking about traffic and mitigation as to what is going to happen. We've gotten the DOT involved. We've gotten reports back from the police. We've gotten reports back from fire, from EMS, et cetera." So they've all weighed in on this project at this point. The applicant has literally said yes to the Orange County Department of Planning, yes to the police recommendations, yes to fire recommendations, yes to extra parking that we mandated that was above and beyond. They have said no to nothing. So anyone else who looks at this, what are they actually going to say to these people? We want more? They haven't said no to anything. I really find it difficult not to make a determination this evening. But unfortunately, the planning board could not make a determination at subsequent meeting because of the moratorium. During that planning board review process, the applicant submitted what's known as a, we call it an expanded environmental assessment form, and that's exhibit D to the application materials you have. And that demonstrates the second prong of the moratorium variance, that this project will not result in any significant environmental impacts, including any impact to surrounding natural resources, public health, comfort, or safety concerns, or have a negative impact on the village. Again, the planning board almost adopted a negative declaration, which is a finding of no environmental impacts. Again, the project is a permitted use in the OR zoning district, which New York law tells us is tantamount to a legislative finding that the project is harmonious with the neighborhood. It is surrounded by a mix of commercial and residential properties. Not only did the planning board take a look at this expanded EAF and the various reports and studies, but the planning board's engineer did, the county planning department did, the police department did, fire did. They all had comments, and the applicant changed its projects to accommodate those comments. Some highlights on that expanded EAF and a demonstration of how there are no environmental impacts. One, there will be a restrictive covenant in the rear of the property, which will prohibit development within the Mudina Creek buffer area. There will be a stormwater pollution prevention plan that has been designed in accordance with all New York Department of Environmental Conservation regulations, which will control sediment, erosion, and stormwater better than what exists today. The applicant has gone above and beyond the FEMA floodplain regulations to ensure that flooding impacts will not occur related to the development. The planning board confirmed that the village has more than enough capacity to handle water and sewer flows that will result from the project. The state historic preservation office has made a determination that the project will not result in any adverse impacts to archaeological or historical resources. There are no sensitive habitats or species on the project site, yet the applicant will comply with tree clearing regulations. And Phil Greeley will talk about the traffic mitigation that's proposed, but we want to highlight that the applicant is putting in two traffic cameras in certain locations that were not recommended by the New York State DOT, but recommended by the village and the applicant agreed. The third prong is that the project will expose the applicant to substantial monetary liability and will leave the applicant unable to realize a return on their investment during the moratorium period. The cost that has been invested into this property is a result, the result of the almost four years of review we've been kind of going at this. We submitted an investment letter from the applicant that details all the investments that have been made into the project. The total investments made to date is $1,426,180.27. After the project is fully constructed, the total investment will be $7,626,180.27. We also submitted a valuation from a professional real estate appraiser, which shows what the property would be worth under different scenarios that are permitted under the moratorium. You know, under the moratorium, you can develop, but very limited things you can develop during the moratorium period. That real estate appraiser went through each of those scenarios and looked at what the property would be worth if we didn't go with the project, but we complied with the moratorium. What we found out was the only way for the applicant to realize a return and not lose any money on the project is by this village board granting the moratorium variance. Again, the investments made to date are about 1.4 million, fully constructed, about 7.6. The value fully constructed would be about 10.5. The value of the property without any approvals, if we stopped now and sold it, would be 670,000. So if we left town today, there would be a significant financial loss by the applicant. The value with approvals allowed under the moratorium, reconstruction, development of a new single-family house and so forth, range from 670,000 to 950,000. Again, if we complied with this moratorium, there would be substantial financial liability on behalf of the applicant. The value of an approved project, but not constructed, is 1.2 million. Again, that would result in a loss of financial investments made. So the only way the applicant can realize a return on its investments, which is demonstrated in your record, is through this board granting the moratorium variance. That is, in a sum, the quite large packet that we have submitted. I'll now hand it over to Mr. Morganti to go over the site plan for your benefit and the members of the public.
One question for you while we're at it.
Sure.
And it's going to be my only question. I noted that you stated in your application that this was a, that you believe it was an unlisted secret action?
Yes.
Okay. It's my view that it's actually type two.
Oh, yeah, you know, no, and that works out. You know, one of the things, and this is not my first moratorium variance application I've done, is you have your planning board who's doing the secret review process. The moratorium is actually a, a action under secret, and what your counsel is explaining is that this board now might not have to worry about the secret.
And so basically, secret sets up three, well, secret technically sets up two different types of actions. Type one actions, which require a significant in-depth look into the environmental and cultural impacts and whatnot of the project. Type two, which don't require any look into it. And then in the middle is this diaphanous, unlisted action. When you pass the moratorium, subsection 36 of the type-two secret actions lists adoption of a moratorium specifically, it provides adoption of a moratorium as specifically a type-two action. Subsection 26 says routine administration or continuing agency administration and management is a type-two action. It is my view that hearing the hardship application, the hardship variance request, is just routine administration of the moratorium and therefore is a type-two action, and doesn't require you to make any environmental findings, or require you to declare yourself or the planning board or the zoning board of litigation.
Now, just to add to that, your approval tonight doesn't mean we go full building permit tomorrow. What it means is we go back to the planning board, and we go back to the zoning board of appeals to continue the review process.
I concur with that statement.
So, good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Michael Morganti. I am the project manager for this particular application. Mr. Gottlieb did a very good job of giving an overview of the project, so I'll try to keep it brief, since he covered a lot of the items I'm about to go over again as well. For the board's knowledge and the public's knowledge, this is 61 East Main Street, building right diagonally across the street over there. It's all boarded up at the front. It's in the OR district, and as you can see, according to our bulk zoning table, we meet all the bulk zoning requirements for this. We do not need the variances of the least, front yard, rear yard, side yard, lot area variances, or anything of that. We're showing a driveway entrance right in this location, approximately in the center of property. In this location here, we are in the New York State DOT right away from New York State Route 94, and so this project has been reviewed by the DOT very thoroughly. Our traffic consultant, Mr. Greeley, has spearheaded that effort, and has supported it as necessary. We are pretty far along in the review process with the DOT. I'll let Mr. Greeley discuss that after my presentation. But essentially, we have way further than conceptual approval. We're in the final design stages, essentially, again, this approved with the DOT with a few minor outstanding comments. We've got a 26-foot-wide driveway, I'll show here, and 26-foot-wide in the interior of the site as well, to make sure that the site was designed for fire access, so the fire apparatus vehicle can get all the way in around this site, be able to combat fires at all buildings, and then ultimately exit the site appropriately. We have essentially 14 units on both floors on either side, so we have 28 dwelling units here, at two spaces per unit. We've got 56 spaces that are required for parking, and we provided essentially 70 unit spaces. We had this area designed initially, you can see this darker gray area here, this is where the 56 spaces lie. When this plan was circulated to emergency management services, there were some concerns that came back about after parking. So we worked with the planning board engineer and the planning board at that time to develop this additional, we call it now shadow parking, we call it banked parking as well. It's literally been designed and graded, stormwater management system accounts for it, but the idea would be that we would only construct it after we determined maybe necessary based on the site functions. That could be triggered by either the applicant themselves feels a need for that, or the village building inspector, they feel there's a need for it as well. We did design all of this additional parking over here to make sure that we did not place any fill within that 100-year flood zone that was a big concern during the planning process. So we have adequate parking, we had adequate setbacks, we're meeting the intent of the zoning code. As Mr. Gottlieb noted before, there's adequate water and sewage capacity within the village. It's all loaded with plants, and we confirmed that with both departments during the planning process. The correspondence is in the village file for all of that. One of the other things that we took a look at as it relates to the site plan itself was issues that were related to... Oops. So we received photos during the planning process showing some water elevations on the property, that during either Irene or Sandy, I can't remember exactly which one. But what's typical practice is that the first floor elevation of the building is set two feet above the established 100-year flood elevation. And since Irene and Sandy, FEMA's got a real good handle on your flood zone now. So there's lots of now what we call cross-sections along the Mudina River, which really tell you what flood elevations are. They've probably never been more accurate. So having said that, our flood elevation on this property is at 307. I normally would have to design this for 309 is the first floor elevation of the building. I'm at 313.3. That's 6.3 feet higher than I'm required. And I did all of that while still not placing any fill within the flood zone. So where we need to be at 309, we're at 313.3. We have designed our stormwater management system underneath the parking lot in this location, and it's been even oversized to make sure that we handle a one-year storm event. This will have very few overflows associated with the one-year storm event, which is not even the most common storm event. The 90% storm is the most common storm event. You have sandy soils in this area, very sandy, gravelly soils. We've dug test pits down to a depth of eight to 10 feet. It's what we call banked material in the construction industry, very, very absorbent materials. Our, what we're attempting to do here is take all of the impervious surface, route it into that stormwater system, and basically recharge that water back into the groundwater. By the time it travels through a few feet of that soil, it's purified, it gets back into the, into the groundwater supply system. We've prepared extensive landscaping plans, provide screening on either side of the project. We've provided a lighting plan to minimize light spillage onto neighboring, there is zero light spillage on the neighboring properties. Everything is downlit and dark sky compliant. We have done archaeological studies on this property, sent them to the state historic preservation office, have gotten no effect finding letter. There was nothing of significance on the property. We have had this plan referred to Orange County Planning as part of the 239 G M L referral. Orange County came back with some... Orange County came back with some comments, one of which was to consider donating a portion of the land in the back over here towards their park efforts as it relates to the Mood Creek. This applicant has been asked to do a lot of things on this project that I've never had to do on any other project in thirty years that I've been in this business. And this applicant has said no to every single one, and he's said yes to every single one of them. He declined nothing. He's literally given this board and this village everything they requested on this particular application. I've probably never put together a more thorough set of plans, and I've never probably had been challenged as much with engineering for requests that were not necessary. And I can tell you that this project is very, very well engineered. If the village is aware, I've done some project before over here for oil chemicals. I designed all those stormwater drainage systems. Even all the storm events we've had, my systems did not fail. So I can tell you, I put my best engineering into this project, and I'm very proud of the plans that sit here before the village. And I hope you guys really consider granting a variance for the moratorium tonight. I'll pass it on to my colleague at that point, Mr. Phil Greeley. Oh, before I forget, one other thing. Just so the board sees, as part of this project, we, in the prior administration going through the planning process, it was requested we put a parkour park in front of the site, which we've done. Again, something I've never really been requesting to do before. We've done that, and this site plan has gone through, I can't tell you how many iterations where we end up even turning the buildings perpendicular to the road and changing the alignments and that. So that's one of the things I wanted to make aware to the board and the public. Now, I'm trying to move this through.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Philip Greeley with Flannon Colliers Engineering and Design. We compare the traffic studies and all the documents related to that that are in the files. The studies focus, you know, on traffic along East St. Street at the intersection with ninety-four and Brotherhood at the site access. We are in what's referred to as the Highway Work Commitment Process with New York State DOT. As part of the review, there were multiple reviews and additions to the plans to address those comments. As part of a DOT permit, you deal with access, traffic, drainage, any utility connections because it's all state right-of-way. In this particular case, the improvements that resulted from the studies, and a lot of it is related to existing additions. We are improving sidewalks. There's an existing crosswalk in that vicinity which we'll be upgrading to ADA compliance. We have offered to install what's called an RRFB, a Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon, for pedestrians to cross there. At this point in time, New York State DOT has indicated that they would like to take the wait and see on that because they want to make sure that it's warranted. You just can't put these in, in every location, and it's dependent on what the actual pedestrian demand is. So that would be the condition of our approval. In addition, as a result of some of the traffic surveys and the analysis with the bus traffic and what occurs in the village during peak hours, we have worked with New York State DOT and the, the planning board. And as Mr. Gottlieb has indicated, we're installing video detection cameras. There's actually, based on the DOT's further review, there are two cameras going in at the intersection of Route two oh eight and ninety-four. And there will be one camera at the intersection of ninety-four and Brotherhood Plaza Drive. Two things that the cameras do. Number one is allows DOT to review operations remotely, because as part of this, there will be motives installed in the control cabinets with that equipment. And it allows them to adjust to conditions as, as they occur. Or if, right now, you know, if you have a loop failure, if the utility work going on and the loop gets cut, then the signal goes to a fixed-time operation. By having these video cameras, the DOT, it saves them on manpower, it makes it more efficient, and that would all be done at the cost to the developer. We are in what's called the second stage, there's three stages to a DOT permit. The last stage is actually issuing the permit. The, we finished the first stage, we're in the second stage, which is the detailed design review. That finishes when we have a site plan approval. The third stage, and as Mr. Gottlieb indicated, there's a few details being, you know, finalized, just in terms of some of the sidewalk details. Since we started this process, some of the item numbers have changed, so those will have to be addressed on some of the paving items. And then the last stage is when the applicant would have a contractor to do any of the improvements that DOT requires. There's special contractors that would do the signal work, and then the curbing work, and sidewalk work. So that would be the, the third stage. That wouldn't occur until we have site plan approvals from, from the village, but that's where we are in the process. All these things would be done at the cost of the applicant, no cost to the village. That's in Quipson offices that have everything that was done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That concludes the presentation.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. I just want to thank you, thank you for your time and the presentation.
Thank you.
At this point, we will entertain audience participation for anyone who's interested in making a comment in regards to this public hearing. Christine has, I believe, the list, so if you can call it out for us.
Sean Hagerty. Do you have her?
I wasn't going to comment on this, that was the other.
Okay. Teresa Barth.
Yes, getting down to the point where it's a historical site, how all of a sudden it's not.
I'm sorry, just reiterate it for the record, okay? Can you just give the name and address, please?
Teresa Barth, twenty-seven Washingtonville, twenty-seven Capitol.
Thank you.
Okay. And just a, and a reminder, this is a public comment, not for conversation purposes, so it's really for you to state your comments and they'll be recorded for the record. Thank you.
Right. My question is, how did we go from it being a historical site to people wanting to come in and change what this town is about? What, I don't, you know, why is it, why are they picking sixty-one? Or, you know, changing the whole historical village is what I'm trying to find out.
Thank you.
That's an on the list.
Sorry?
That's an on the list.
That's it? Okay. Benny?
Benny Martin, I'm from the Parkwood. Is it my understanding that the gentleman talking about the traffic study, will he answer questions or not?
No.
No.
If you want to ask a question, I mean, really, the public hearing is for, it's for comment, not for, for back and forth.
From my understanding that, you know, they said they were to put out traffic cameras on two oh eight, ninety-four. I don't care how many cameras you put out. Can I ask a question, maybe you'll answer it?
It's up to the, yeah, I'll answer whatever.
From my understanding, you basically, did you say that the traffic study wasn't completed until he gets site approval?
No. There were detailed traffic studies that were done. The planning board had requested that we expand those studies to do delay studies on the school bus operations. That was all provided, that's all in the records in the village. That was also relayed to New York State DOT and Orange County as part of that review process. Mitigation that I was referring to is being coordinated as part of the permit process. So DOT issues a permit with input from the village and input from their technical staff looking at what things can be done. And in this case, the requirements would be for the applicant to upgrade the detection at each of those intersections, Brotherhood and at the main intersection in the village, two oh eight and ninety-four, with video detection. The idea is that it would also allow DOT remotely to visualize what is occurring. If there's a problem, they can adjust the signals. And on a long-term basis, which if DOT wants, we would agree to put in what's called adaptive, which is software and hardware that would be put in to further enhance or, or squeeze out any capacity that they can.
Does it make cars disperse?
No, it doesn't. And what it does is it cuts down on the delays. It allows, for example, when ninety-four needs more green time, instead of going to the phase that allows Brotherhood to exit, for example, it would hold back that traffic and allow more time to Route ninety-four. So in cases like this, this is what DOT is doing these days. They put these systems in other places where additional roadways don't make sense, there's not right-of-way, it's to help ease conditions. So the traffic from this development is not that cause. There's existing conditions, but on the secret, we're required to mitigate our traffic, but also the DOT uses the opportunity to help improve current conditions. So that's what's, and it would all be done at the applicant's cost.
So my comment to the village board would be, we all, obviously this gentleman hasn't been here today's lot on a school day because just traffic from ninety-four, both directions, two oh eight, both directions.
That's correct.
There's not, I don't care how much adaptive singling that you can put, you're not going to eliminate the cars. And, and the fact that people are going to have to make a left turn out of that development, I guarantee you, you're going to end up putting those extra spots in the back that shadow parking, because if you drive around this village, everybody in this village has at least four or five cars. Even though that's an apartment building and they're living on it, everybody's got multiple cars, and you're going to end up filling those parking spaces, and it's going to add more traffic. You're not going to be able to make all that happen.
Thank you. Name and everyone.
Pat Mitchell of Ten Year Old Place. Last year, the insurance rates were horribly high and they're going higher because of the insurers. And they will, FEMA, because I renew my flood license every year, FEMA is increasing rates once again, and also some of the underwriting particulars with the ratings on that. So things are going up, not down, definitely. It's not going to control any course here. It's going to hit the whole village.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Hang on a second, Steve, we got, Steve, I'm saying I got somebody behind you, sorry.
Mike Resi on Three Large Street. So this is a hardship application meeting. I just want to say, the residents objected to this project four years ago. We, you know, they, they pushed the project through regardless of how long it took. The residents objected to this project for a number of reasons. People talked about flooding, the village character, traffic. And like Benny says, traffic is a nightmare around here. I don't see how you could put twenty-eight, basically, single-family homes on four acres of property and not have a major, you know, traffic problem. The engineer talked about raising the, the, the building to three hundred and thirteen feet. What about the cars in the parking lot? They're unpaved. They're, 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 they're exposed to flooding and, and all the environmental stuff that could cause if, if they get caught in a, in a flooded area. I, I really don't care what the DOT said. They don't live in this village, and it's going to be a total nightmare if this project goes through. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Steve?
Yeah, Stephen Toley, one twenty-three Lewis Court, Washingtonville, New York. I'd like to touch on something here that's so far not, this hasn't been touched on, and it models the town itself. I'll just read this out here. In New York State, municipalities regulate land use through zoning regulations enabled by New York State Town Law seven dash seven hundred. The intent of zoning is to ensure the health, safety, morals, general welfare of the community by encouraging or discouraging how land is used in various areas of a community. The way that land is used affects the health and safety of residential neighborhoods, the ability for businesses to locate within the village, and what important natural resources will be protected. The Village of Washingtonville regulates land uses and development primarily through Chapter one seventy-five zoning of the Village of Washington Code. The zoning establishes the purposes of the land use regulations, which are intended to protect the public health, safety, and welfare as follows. I just want to stop at this moment and just point out that I can understand and appreciate what these gentlemen are doing when they look at the way that is zoned, which is residential and commercial. They put together plans which denote all activities of a usual plan. I'm extremely well-versed in planning, being in the construction industry for fifty years. Now, I appreciate what they're doing by trying to stick with the zoning of and within the boundaries of what they look at as residential and commercial occupancy. But I'd like to bring up a couple of things that, basically, the village itself, we'd like to guide and regulate the orderly growth, development, and redevelopment of the Village of Washingtonville in accordance with the Coppiance of Plan and Long-Term Executives Principles and Standards, being beneficial to the interests and welfare of the people, to protect the established character and the social and economic well-being of both private and public property, to promote in the public interest utilization of land for the purposes for which it is most appropriate, to secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, and to provide adequate light, air, and convenience of access. Plan is also devised to present overcrowding of land or buildings and to avoid undue concentration of population, to lessen and where possible, to prevent traffic injection on public streets and highways, and to conserve the value of buildings and enhance the value of land throughout the village. It is my single opinion that I feel that this project is not full within the boundaries of what the public and what Washingtonville Village represents as far as architectural design and the placement of where it would be. And as far as congestion, I know for a fact, northbound on two oh eight daily, there's over five, fifty-five hundred cars just northbound alone on two oh eight on a daily basis. That has been verified. If, if, I'd be glad to tell you how, how it's been there. The congestion would be unsurmountable, the amount of cars would be, you know, it's almost impassable now. I don't, you know, when you, how, there's only a certain amount of time you can allot to change the lights, red and green. But when you have a massive influx, which we always do, at minimum twice daily during school hours and work hours, or after-work hours, the congestion is going to be there, and it can only get worse. And that's basically, I, I just think that, you know, it doesn't, you know, confer with what we are trying to do and develop in, in the town. And again, I want to stress the fact that I understand the direct impact, and they talk about you've complied with this, complied with that, on and on and on, which I appreciate that, and I respect them for that. But what they're looking at is just, you know, one plot, one, one area, without really taking into consideration the surrounding areas of Washingtonville represents. So it's just my opinion, again, my single opinion, it just doesn't fit in, in, in the texture of the community. It might somewhere else in Washingtonville, I'm not saying it's not, but in that particular location, I think it would cause an enormous amount of, of issues, you know, whether fire, medical, I don't care what you're telling me. That single driveway coming through, you still got to get across ninety-four, you still got to get down ninety-four. There's been issues where the medics can't even get out off of North Street at times, you know, because the traffic is just blocking it. The police department has one driveway, and they got, they hit a, you know, a standstill. They can't get around anywhere, can't get through anything. So I'm just, you know, it, it's the, it's the amount that's there, it's the size of that building, you know, the amount of occupancy. And as far as the DOT, I can appreciate them, but their accuracy on what they're talking about, they're numbers, they're not actuality, they're not, they're, they're mathematical numbers. They don't represent impact. And that, that's my issue about when you go to looking at, you know, putting a building into place, where are you putting it, the traffic, parking, which I deal with all the time in my field of work. So I know it's a little speech, but that's about it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Yes, sir.
I think if we could just, um, just respond to a few things. Um, you know, obviously we just heard one of the words, it says fire, safety. Uh, again, we remind you, the police have reviewed this project. EMS has reviewed this project. Fire has reviewed this project. Um, and who better to, to say than those agencies? And then I'll have, uh, Michael, um, talk about the historic comment that was made.
There was a couple of things I left out in my presentation, which actually might answer some of the questions that were raised. Um, in terms of, we went through an architectural review process in the very beginning of this project. So as you can see in the rendering, we, we made every attempt to make this look like it's going to fit into the Village of Washingtonville. There's very colonial-style looking buildings here with gables, uh, windows with, uh, treatments on them. Uh, the, the village park in, in the front. Uh, no one can sit here and say that we have not attempted to make this fit within the Village of Washingtonville's character. Um, that was one of the major things that we were up against when we first started, and these were the elevation views that kinda confirmed that. Okay, so it would look very much like any of the buildings that are right here on one ninety-four. In particular, the, the doctor's office, it's right here on the right-hand side of the green building. I think that's Washington Pediatrics, right? So, I mean, we, we, we took a look around and we did the best we could to try to make this look like something that would fit in the character of this community. Uh, as it relates to, um, the historical, that's, that was one of my opening statements was, um, this New York State Historic Preservation Office. So when we were going through the planning process, um, the environmental assessment form we prepared came back with a trigger that this area in general is archaeologically sensitive. So that required us to do an archaeological study. So we did that archaeological study. We dug holes around the property. We took pictures of the building inside and outside. And we had to submit all this information to New York State Historic Preservation Office. And they reviewed this and saw that there would be no effect on the surrounding community by this proposed project. So we did take a look at all of that. It was sent up to the required agencies to review. So just wanted to make that information a part of the record also.
Thank you.
And one last thing, and then I swear we'll rest our case here. Uh, there were comments about how this doesn't fit in with the village, uh, so forth and so on. But the record before the planning board shows that the village in its comprehensive plan has identified a housing crisis. A housing crisis in need of apartments. The New York State Governor's Office has identified a housing crisis. Houses are needed, apartments are needed. Um, we're, we're moving away from a world where it's just single-family houses, uh, because those are hard to obtain these days.
Thank you. Any other comment? Yes?
Patrice Gessner of Seventh Carrot Lane, Washingtonville. Although you state that that does look like it belongs in Washingtonville, the house to the right of that property is a one or two-level family home. The house to the left of that is a two-family or one house, one family house. Next to that one is also a one-person house, et cetera. It might have one business in it, but it is not the length of that building. That's the only type of building like that length or width on Route ninety-four. So it does not fit. The gables, you know, you can try and mask that it looks and mask that it feels like Washingtonville. But when you actually look around, three sixty from that property, you will not see any other building like that.
Thank you very much. Um, another question back?
Monica Morrow, ninety-eight East Main Street. Uh, I've lived here my whole life, seventy-seven years. So I've seen a lot of changes that you people haven't seen. I, I was here for all of them. On East Main Street is one-story home, all the way down. Behind you were farms. Over here was a farm. Where the condos are was a farm. Where the apartments are, there was a farm. Where the Catholic Church up there, that was a farm. And all these homes are there now. On ninety-four, there's homes. Apartments, condos do not belong on ninety-four to keep the historical part and the fact that we don't need any more traffic. You can sit on your front porch fifty years ago and you knew every person who went by in a car. And now it's, it's a, it's just going through there. And you can't change the, change it because of the way the creek is. You can't bypass Washingtonville. If there was a way to bypass it, it would be a lot different. But the changes that you people have seen is nothing to what I've seen. And you need to leave it the way it is now and not make it any worse than it is already as far as the traffic on ninety-four goes. Cause I, I can't get out of my driveway at certain times and I live over here. And the light's way up there. So how many people are you gonna let go through one light to get the traffic out? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, yes?
I sort of also have a question too. I believe like in some of the hearings from, that I've sat in from the past, that most of the traffic might have to make a right out of that complex, which would bring traffic out and around. Are they, and then my other question was, are they able to actually pull out of there and make a left since there's a double yellow line?
Uh, they are permitted by law to make a left turn out of the driveway. Uh, one of the comments was whether or not that should be restricted. New York State DOT reviewed that and determined that both lefts and rights would be allowed out of the driveway. As with any other driveway along there that's not signalized, you would have to wait for a break to exit. Um, and but at this point, New York State DOT did not put any restriction. That's not to say that in the future, uh, part of any permit that they issue, they reserve the right to restrict movement. But based on their review, there would be no restrictions here.
But there could be, which would force all the traffic to go right and then have to make a left to go through.
It sounds likely that they would do that, uh, but.
A possibility.
It's always, any, any permit that they issue, there's a law and it says we reserve the right to restrict movement.
Thank you. Next question. Ladies first.
So I understand inside we need an adequate means of egress from the apartments. But when I looked at that picture that the sky was possessing, I saw only one way out of one apartment. That two or three means of egress. We have an ambulance coming in and then we have a person that just had a heart attack or something else and needs something else. We have someone coming in, someone coming out. What's gonna happen then? Lot is lost in just ten seconds or less. Can you think about those things? I don't see that in picture. I'd like to know with the coming out of the thing, how that's looking, truly looking.
Well, I will say, again, the project has been reviewed by multiple consultants, including your own villages. It is completely compliant with the fire code. It has been reviewed by the EMS and the fire department. And if we start to have hypotheticals of multiple emergent events with people pulling that in and out and everything happening at once, I think we lose sight of practicality. Um, and one of the things that I think we'll try to end this evening on is what we're hearing this night are, are concerns that we've heard the last four years or so and have addressed to the extent practical. Um, we have technical reports and studies with the village and state agencies reviewed. Um, you know, those are, those reports and studies have gone to the various agencies that have jurisdiction over those studies and everything has been deemed satisfactory.
Thanks, Tom.
Yes, but I'm looking at it from an insurance point of view. You may have maybe one or two insurance companies that might write that, not fifteen or twenty. Hard-priced insurance companies are putting right out of the market. We can't, um, afford the insurance anymore. How are we gonna control this?
Thank you.
Not a quick look away, I do since I'm.
Uh, next question, Steve, I think?
Yeah, she had a touch on it. I just wanted to make a point that there's only one entrance and exit in the entire complex. So there's only one way in, one way out. So there's no escape plan, so to speak. And I just, I just had forgotten to mention that in the list that I had. And to that amount, you know, you're talking twenty-eight, you can put fifty-six cars. And if a total of seventy-nine cars, that's a lot of cars. Um, but my point is that there's no other way, it's one way in, one way out. And, uh, we can see already how that's, that's a problem, uh, quite frankly, with the police department. They only have one way in, one way out themselves. And they have their own share of problems with that, you know, coming on to, to ninety-four and responding. I can appreciate what the gentleman's saying that all the studies were done. This was accepted, that was accepted. Um, I hope I can review that somewhere. And I'd like to just take a look at how everything is actually worded. And thank you.
Thank you.
It's also a difference between.
Can you just state your name and address again?
Monica Morrow, ninety-eight East Main Street. The other differences between the other, the condos, the other apartments in the village all have multiple ways to get out of, whereas sixty-one East Main Street does not. I mean, you can go out the back of Brookshire to Ahern, to senior housing and all that can go different ways to get out, whereas you can't from sixty-one Main Street. And if you're gonna build it to find out if it works or not, then what do you do if it doesn't work?
Thank you, Monica. Is there anyone else?
Mike.
Thank you.
I just wanna say one more thing. Mike Resi on Three Larch Street. This project's different, but the same as what they wanted to do with the bus garage down on Route two oh eight. It didn't fit our village. It was gonna create a headache for our village. And fortunately, the owners of the project, I guess, they went out to text out there in Middletown. And they have a nice spot for all their buses, their, everything. So that is an appropriate location for that bus garage. And I think the owners of that are probably happy they made that decision. Same thing with this project, way too big for our village. It might fit, like someone, someone else mentioned before, another location, but here in the center of our village, I don't think it works. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, with that, um, we would like to, uh, thank the applicant and the residents for their comments persuading to the twenty-twenty-three local law, number two and number eight. The board will issue its decision on the applicant's hardship application within thirty days of tonight's public hearing. With that, I'd like to say thank you very much for your time and, um, and your input. With that.
I was just gonna wonder, is, is the public hearing gonna close?
Yeah.
Okay.
You okay with that, Chris?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, good. All right, could I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close.
Have a second, please?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Five oh. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So continuing with our agenda, next would be announcements, discussions. Uh, the, just a heads up what's going on for this week and pertaining to Saturday. Um, the Washingtonville Beautification Community Spring Cleanup will be held on Saturday. April twentieth from nine to one, rain date will be the twenty-first. All individuals and organizations interested in cleaning up the brown side of the roads should meet at the Village Hall here at nine AM. Uh, we have bags and we have gloves for, uh, for any organization, family, individuals that are interested. Uh, second would be, also, the event committee is gonna be hosting a sidewalk business sale on Saturday, April twentieth, from eleven AM to four PM at EJ McLaughlin Square. So the square itself will be barricaded, closed at approximately ten thirty. Uh, and there'll be certain vendors and, uh, food and music and some other, uh, things that'll be going on in the, in the triangle area as well as the downtown. Businesses having their sidewalk sale. Okay, just a heads up on that. And also on the same day, we're gonna have the Village-wide, um, yard sale, which will be held on the twentieth as well, from nine AM to four PM. So anyone who's interested, the event committee is keeping a directory of anyone's interest to be part of it and they're gonna publish it. For anyone having a garage sale of sorts, that they could advise the event committee, they'll be added to the list and then that list will be published. Okay? Thank you. Any questions on any of that good stuff? Okay. Uh, next is, uh, EFC. This is a continuing conversation with the Waste Water Treatment Plan, where we've discussed where there was a million forty thousand dollars still left, uh, out in, uh, upstate New York and the EFC organization. So recently, we were able to additionally claim and, and be reimbursed for a hundred and seventy-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy cents for the Waste Water Treatment Plan project. And those dollars, um, through the audits appearing that they came, uh, directly from multiple funds, be it A, be it G, or be it F, which is water and sewer. So that's good news and we still have an additional eight hundred and, I'm sorry. We have an additional six hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we're pursuing through EFC, um, working with Delaware Engineering to put paperwork together and try to obtain all the information that's missing that EFC is requiring to receive this reimbursement. So that's still a work in progress. Okay? So, let's see, there are also over here. All right, so on to resolutions. We have eight twenty-four zero zero two nine. This will authorize myself to sign the Home Rule Request Regarding Enactment of Special Law Concerning Deficit Financing. So the deficit financing, what we're looking to do is move that date out into June of, of next year, twenty twenty-five, due to the amount of time and length it's taking to complete the audits. The order for twenty 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 has been completed and we will be posting the, uh, management letter from PKF and also a response from the village in regards to those, um, concerns and issues in the report. So we're addressing each one as we go. Okay, so with that, can I have a motion for that resolution, please? Motion. Have a second, please?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Please have a comment, Tom. Recently, uh, Mr. Denaply put out a list of six villages in the state that were under fiscal stretch and Washingtonville is not in there.
Okay. Yeah.
I don't know.
Because we didn't have a bond rating.
Yeah.
Well, that would put you under fiscal stress, wouldn't it?
Yes, but they don't acknowledge us because we didn't have a bond rating. That's what I was educated about. They can't rate us without a.
Yeah.
We're not even able to make the list.
That may be good sometimes, but not today. All right, that's the answer. I looked it up, I couldn't find an answer.
Yeah. And I've been kind of been looking at it. I think once, again, they took the bond rating away in twenty twenty, that it just, um, kinda fell off the list and, you know, where we are, where we are. The, uh, state audit is still ongoing. They're now auditing, the state OSE is, is auditing our twenty twenty-two, twenty-three audit. Um, PKF is now beginning the twenty twenty-one audit. So everything's in progress. It's just, um, as the same story as in twenty twenty, it's just the lack of documentation, um, and tying everything together to put a real audit together. Um, the management letter pretty much states that it's incomplete, but, you know, um, and that's pretty, you know, pretty broad statement, but, uh, the details are in there if anybody would like to read them and, uh, it's, um, you know, again, we're working on twenty twenty-one and see what, what that produces. And it's, you know, again, we're working on twenty-twenty-one, see what that produces.
Where could you get that statement online?
We're going to put it online if it's about to go up, if not already.
I'll put it up tomorrow.
Yeah, so it'll be on the website or, you know.
I'll go on the, I'll stop and see if I get a hard copy. I hate the computer.
Yeah, we can do that, send it on that. Yeah, we could do that, bring some copies. That's fine.
Thank you.
A little light reading.
Yeah. All right, so that passed, okay. So next is eight twenty-four zero zero three zero, Resolution to authorize the adoption and law enacting Chapter sixty-nine of Village Code, Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals amending Chapter three fifteen zoning of the Village Code. So again, this is from the public hearing that we are initiating to join the two boards together at this point, really what it comes down to.
Be one board with seven members.
Correct. And they will have a zoning night and a planning night as planned. Yes?
There's a question. After this meeting about the new attorney, what's going to happen next? After they came, they did their presentation, what's the best guess?
I'll, I'll address that.
Oh.
As the mayor said, under the moratorium, under local, two thousand twenty-three local laws, two and eight, the Village Board of Trustees must make a decision on the hardship application within thirty days of tonight.
Okay.
So it's April, so by May fifteenth, there will be a decision.
Okay.
That will either grant the hardship application, at which point, basically, it's a gatekeeping function. The project would go back to the, if this local law passes, it'd go to the zoning board, because the zoning board takes over the functions of the planning board to continuous review of the project. If the Village Board of Trustees denies the hardship application, then they need to wait until the moratorium is over.
And when is that over?
It is over when it's over. So the more, each moratorium, each moratorium law lasts for six months.
That's a regular, yes.
There have been two moratorium laws passed so far that have covered everything. June, I believe, and December.
June first.
June first and then December, December fourteenth.
Was the second extension.
So that will expire in May? Am I doing my math right?
We have till the end of May, June first.
June first, okay. Courts look with skepticism over moratoriums that last, let's call it, two to two and a half years or longer. For instance, one court struck down a moratorium that lasted three years. But this moratorium process is in contemplation of a comprehensive plan and rezoning pursuant to that plan. My understanding is that comprehensive plan is moving along well. And hopefully, one more extension, if that, up to the Village Board.
Potentially one more six months.
Yeah. And after the moratorium is lifted, then you get back to the zoning board or planning board or whatever it is.
Also, this can go on for a long time.
I can't predict the future, unfortunately.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we had a motion, I believe, in a second.
On thirty-one?
I'm sorry.
You're on thirty-one?
To the boards.
For the combining of the boards.
What's the benefit of that?
Sorry?
What is the benefit of combining the two boards?
The benefit, we believe, in combining the boards is that you're basically, you have the same seven people handling both planning and zoning. So in some cases, no, there's no loss potentially of communications, understanding what the problems are. You're, you're handling on both sides of the fence. And I think it's a plus. I actually ran into this when I was at the, late February, I was in a NICOM meeting, and there was a bunch of discussions with planning and zoning. And there were a couple of communities that said that they had combined their boards. And I said, man, that, first of all, didn't know that. And I said, then I spoke to the NICOM attorneys, and it really did seem to be like a good advantage for the people that are on that board, because again, they get both sides of it, and it's good follow-through from a communication standpoint. And when they're dealing with the applicants, they've got one face for both issues, be it zoning or be it planning. That's, that was the thought process behind it.
But they have two specific jobs. Each board.
That's correct.
Has a specific job.
Don't put on their zoning board, ZVA hats when it's a zoning board application.
Wondering if the same people making a decision on both sides, is that going to be a, you know, could there be a conflict? Kind of like had, you know, it's kind of like an internal conflict of interest.
Well, according to New York, at this point, I want to say, could that be an issue? I, I don't think it's a negative. You know, I just think that if I'm going in on a planning board side, and it's going to be, has to go to zoning for whatever particular reason, because of the side yard requirements, I already know what's going on with the project. I know what the details are. And then I'm looking at it from a zoning perspective. I think it's a positive, positive. That's the way I look at it.
It also helps out applicants, because say you have a project and you need a variance. Normally, you'd either have to get a negative ruling for the building inspector, or you'd have to have the planning board send you to the zoning board to get the variances. When there's just the zoning board, which has both hats, they don't have to ship things back and forth from the zoning board to the planning board and the planning board to the zoning board. It's, it streamlines things, streamlines things.
Also, it's a seven-member board, which now means a quorum is four instead of three. We've had a few instances where we couldn't have meetings because we didn't have a quorum. Nancy?
Yeah, so just, I, I think the idea is an interesting one in concept, and definitely getting enough members to have a quorum has been an ongoing struggle. Peaks and valleys of that for the years. I'm wondering, logistically, like our attorney just pointed out, logistically, how is it going to work? You've said we're going to have still a planning board meeting and a zoning board meeting listed in a month. But then at the meeting, how is that working?
That, that is ultimately up to the board.
So.
And each board will have their separate attorney. So the planning board will still have the original planning board attorney, and ZVA will have still their attorney.
Right, so I just want to clarify whether the vision here is that it's going to, the hats are going to vacillate during a meeting?
It could.
Or, no, no.
No, you're at the planning board meeting, you're at the planning board meeting.
You've got the planning board hat.
And zoning.
Yeah.
So we want to be clear about that. The applicants and administration and everybody understands that they're coming to a meeting. And if there's a zoning issue, as an example, it needs a hearing on that.
ZVA.
They're coming to a second meeting.
On a separate day.
Separate day.
Right.
Because the same rule, you know, when you look, when you're doing planning or the zoning, right? You want, you want the material from the applicant, say, ten days before. You, you can't, in midstream of a planning board meeting.
That's what I'm just getting.
Throw on my zoning board hat, because.
Mechanics of how this is supposed to work.
Mechanics, that just doesn't work. So, you know, you guys are disciplined enough, and a lot of yous have been on those boards long enough, that planning is planning and zoning is going to be zoning. But I, you know, again, for me, I like the idea that it's, I mean, I think the whole board's in agreement of it. We voted for it. But it's the same people, I hate to maybe use this term, but it's one, one throat to choke, you know? I don't have to go, you know, it's not the G C I got to go see, it's the plumber. No, it's not the plumber, it's the carpenter. But I go to the G C and say, it's your fault.
Very right.
But at least I've got one focus, one set of people that we're dealing with. Bad analogy, but that.
Yeah.
Okay. So we had a second and a motion on that particular resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes five zero. Next is the appointment of the members of the Plan, Combined Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals. So to read through this, whereas the Village of Washington enacted a local amending Chapter sixty-nine of the Code of the Village of Washington Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals and impending Chapter three fifteen zoning of the Village Code, and whereas the Village Board desires to appoint members of its Combined Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, Appeals, I'm sorry, now therefore be resolved that the Village Board is filed with Section one, the whereas clause are incorporated herein and set forth in full. Section two, the Village Board hereby appoints the following as members of the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals for the terms indicated. So with A, Rick Budakowski, term shall begin effective on the local law, shall end on the first Monday of April twenty-twenty-nine at twelve p.m. B, Bill Carroll, term will begin on the effective date of the local law and shall end on the first Monday of April twenty-twenty-eight at twelve p.m. C, William Jones, term shall begin on the effective date of the local law, shall end on the first Monday of April twenty-twenty-seven at twelve p.m. D, Pat Cooney, term shall begin effective date of the local law, shall end on the first Monday of April twenty-twenty-six at twelve p.m. E, Jacqueline Davis Norris, term, well, shall begin effective date of local law, shall end on the first Monday of April twenty-twenty-five at twelve p.m. F, Nancy Commerford, shall have term begin upon effective date of the local law and shall end on the first Monday of April twenty-twenty-nine at twelve p.m. And Pat, Patrice Gesner, term shall become effective on the local law and shall end on the first Monday of April twenty-twenty-eight, twelve p.m. Section three, the mayor and any officers, employees, or consultant as directed by the mayor hereby authorized to take any and all actions to carry out the provisions of the local law. Section four, this resolution shall be effective immediately, and such appointment shall be effective on the effective date law, local law enacting Chapter sixty-nine, amending Chapter three fifteen. So with that, roll call. All in favor of the motion, please?
Aye.
Second, on the motion? Or did I do that?
I don't think you gave the motion in the second first.
So we have the second.
Do we, no, actually.
No, I don't think.
I don't think you did.
No. So I have the motion, and I have a second, please.
Motion.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
There we go.
Can we add two, his chair and co-chair?
Is it necessary to add co-chair and chairperson?
No.
If you'd like to mention it, go right ahead, Tom.
Nancy Commerford is chairperson and Rick Budakowski is co-chair.
Thank you.
Co-chairs.
Thank you for everyone. All right.
They couldn't set it up as co-chair, so it's actually chair and co-chair.
Okay. Next is eight twenty-four zero zero three two, Resolution to authorize the adoption of local law adding Chapter level eleven of the Village Code Consulting Fees, as discussed at the public hearing. All, you have a motion for the resolution, please? Thank you. I have a second. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution eight twenty-four zero zero three three, to authorize the purchase of in-ground pickable posts and net system at a cost not to exceed one thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. And those nets will cover the three courts. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Just as an FYI, this practice sports came in as low bid. There were two other quotes, seventeen oh eight and seventeen forty-five. I'd like to thank Steve for many hours on the phone, believe it or not, trying to get companies to quote. And we're, we're on our way for that, so that's great. Any questions or comments additional?
Where is that going?
It's going at the Vern Allen Park, the old.
The old hockey rink.
The old hockey rink?
Oh, down by the.
The other end.
Yeah, Ahearn, yes. Okay. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Next is eight twenty-four zero zero three four, Resolution to authorize the budget transfers and amendments as necessary to effect the necessary transfers of funds to pay those warrants. Have a motion?
Okay.
Second. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. And one item, apologize, is not on the agenda, but it's a resolution, which would be eight twenty-four zero zero three five. It's an auction, absolute auction, and really, for the Village of Washingtonville, we had gone out to bid on, auction on six items. Those items came back acceptable, and we just need a resolution to approve that so we can reach out to the auction company to seal the deals, more or less, and then we can move forward and receive the reimbursement on those particular items. Okay? Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Have a second?
Aye.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. So Chris, you can reach out to auction us? Thank you. So now we're back at the public comment. If anybody had anything? Yes, sir.
Came to light today, it was in the news this evening, on News Twelve. Recent Department of Health letter came out, considering your portion of it. The system is currently in violation of failure to exercise due care, the diligence, and the maintenance provision of all sources of public water system. And for failure to meet maximum day demand, with the largest producing well, I'd say. This is said to a local village outside our village. I'll call on our village board to cease all outside water deliveries outside this village. Keep the water in the village. We're basically aiding and abetting the expansion of surrounding communities. They don't have the water, they're knocking down the forest, they're building buildings that they don't have water for. Cease all deliveries outside this village. Put a resolution today, put it to the vote, stop all water deliveries.
You know, we can't do that.
Sir, can we get something on the agenda? If they will to put it on the agenda, the board itself, the bylaws?
Given what we would need to do to cease expansion, I think it's best served to put it on a future agenda.
Cease expansion? What did you say?
Put us all on water.
To cease, to cease, sorry.
We're just stopping the sale of water out of the village. That's all we're doing. We can vote to put it on the agenda tonight by this village board. I want every trustee and the mayor to put it on notice. I want to hear their vote tonight. Let's get a resolution, and let's pass it tonight to cease all water deliveries.
You could, but if you are going to cease water deliveries, I would recommend that you do it at the next board meeting, and let us draft a full resolution for you for that.
Well, there needs to be a potential resolution, and I also think it also deserves a conversation to figure out if that's the best thing to do.
I don't see why it's not the best thing to do.
And it may be, but we should at least discuss it.
Yep. Okay.
So, and just a point on that, I, I'm waiting to get a picture of it, but there's a tractor trailer from the town of Blooming Grove that comes out of the DPW. Where is that water going? Is it going to town of Blooming Grove? Is it going to town hall?
What type of water?
It's a tractor trailer, eighteen-wheeler, six-thousand-gallon tanker. It comes out of DPW, the tractor has town of Blooming Grove on it. It's white with black lettering.
Okay. When's the last time you saw it?
That was a few weeks ago now.
We took one tanker last month.
Do you have any, any info on that, Chris?
I don't know where he's going with that.
Well, I'll follow up and check on that.
You're taking the water out?
You pay?
So who's paying for the water?
They're paying for it, but we're concerned.
The water's being paid for by the person who's doing the hauling.
And he's selling, he's selling that water as a commodity, so he's making money as well. Keep the water within the.
We're wholesaling.
Him and, and probably two or three other water hauling companies.
Cease all deliveries outside the village. You want to fill up a local pool within the village, so be it, stays in the village. Cease all water deliveries. You're aiding and abetting the expansion around our village. We got a comprehensive plan to protect our village, but we're not protecting what's going around us right now. And for us to protect what's going on around us, keep the water here. They don't have the water, they need the water.
You have no control over anybody else's zone.
You're right, so that's our water, keep it here, and don't aid the expansion of them. Village of South Blooming Grove does not have water. KJ does not have water. They need the water. The health department is saying they don't have the water. They're expanding the amount of construction going on, they don't have the water. But we're sending water. Every day I see trucks walk when I'm walking, every day I see trucks.
Yep.
It's a good point, just we need to have the conversation.
Let's have.
Anybody else? Edie?
Edie Johnson, one five three, around Low Road. Comprehensive, uh, comprehensive, uh, events committee, we're trying to put together a farmer's market. This has just started in the past week, and if we could come up with a dozen good participants at least, it'll be a go, starting in the middle of June. I have probably four so far, and Patrick's busy on his phone, and we want it to be really good groups. If you know of or hear of any farms or things like that that would be suitable, you could either contact me or Patrick.
Edie, what's the commitment, do you know? For the farmer's market?
What, what are you, any commitment?
Well, in terms of, are they running from when to when? How long would...
Oh, so far, it would be two, two Sundays a month.
So if somebody's interested, they would need to commit for the entire season?
Oh, I don't think so. I'll have to ask Pat. Like I said, this idea just came up about five days ago, but he's eager, but we can only do it if we get people started to be lined up right now, or get more, more facts on it. And you can either set up a table for fifty dollars or a double table for a hundred.
I was just asking about the commitment because maybe somebody might do it a couple of times, and then they're not interested anymore, and then what happens to the rest of the season? If you, you said you needed, the events needed a minimum of twelve tables?
Yeah, that's what we started with.
You have four so far?
It's gonna be across from the bagel shop, so there's plenty of room for a double that, so a few people dropped out, but we should definitely try and get a commitment.
Where's, where's the information?
For them?
They've just started to talk about it, and they haven't moved on. It's just...
So maybe we should get a little more information about the dates, the commitment?
Exactly. It's kind of here and there because they don't want to move forward unless they have...
Unless they have a verbal from a hand phone, I get it.
I'll pass on to you, anything?
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Edie. Anything else? Edie? No? Anyone else? Okay. That's it, and I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening and spending time on important issues across the board. With that, can I just have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close.
Have a second? Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
You need to come pick me as well.